Before we start the meeting, I just wanted to let you know bear with me. This is the first time I've presided over the City Council meeting. Four of my cities don't here tonight, so bear with me and...
What's your name?
Rebecca Escobar.
Rebecca Escobar, right here. I want to welcome everyone tonight, especially we have some visitors from our media here tonight with us. I want to remind everybody that once the meeting starts, to refrain from making, you know, talking, remember that if you wish to talk to the council, wait until you acknowledge. Let's talk clearly, respectfully, and please always take your name and address once you are acknowledged, and I would appreciate if we all follow those rules. On that note, let's start reviewing of the agenda. Order 9071-109-1, R-0-071109-1, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 8, 140, solid waste collection and disposal.
I understand that that's going to be carried to two weeks from tonight for the ongoing discussions. The recorders on this have indicated what's the target of this problem.
Order 021201, an ordinance amending ordinance number 127802, fixing salaries and wages of various employees represented by the Municipal Employees Association, and repealing ordinances of course of ordinances inconsistent their work for 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014 collective bargaining agreement. Ordinance of first reading. Order 021202, an ordinance to authorize the conveyance of certain property to the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick. Order 021203, an ordinance authorizing the warranty by the City of New Brunswick in the County of Millicet, State of New Jersey, of not exceeding 48 millions, aggregate principal amount of city guarantee point in revenue responding bonds, serious 2012A of the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick. Order 021204, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, 101280, to clarify tax gap fees. Order 021205, amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, 101260, right turn or left prohibited, George Street and Albany Street. Order 021206, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Traffic and Parking, delete two residential handicap parking zones, Barget Street and Townsend Street, and delete residential handicap parking zones, Barget Street, Townsend Street, and South Ward Street. Order 021207, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 5, 112 records. Order 021208, an ordinance to authorize the sale of certain property of the City of New Brunswick to the House and Authority of the City of New Brunswick. Resolutions. Resolution 021239, again amendments. Resolution 01240, approved payroll 12112, 12712. Resolution 021241 has been fuller the request of the city clerk as unnecessary. Resolution -021242, authorize refund for within tax sales certificates. Resolution 021243, authorize advertisement at the CILO PIS requested by Hope Vega Supervisor of Dial-A-Rite for two 2012 A-cylinder vans with wheelchair lift and one wheelchair station. Resolution 021244, approved extension of preliminary retail consumption license number 1412-320-015-003 for tavern, to the Chapter 7 trustee of the Deptor, State of Coogan Inc., Peggy Southport trustee. Resolution 021245, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of rent agreement for 2012, New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of High School Traffic Safety, for ticket or ticket, civil enforcement grants. Resolution 21246, approved amendment of resolution -011279, the reason to change grid of times so as not to conclude with an event immediately filed with American Cancer Fund, 5K1. Approved request for use of city property requested by American Cancer Fund, location Bugle Park, Mr. Hackett, you always...
But I call it...
Bugle Park and Pavilion, for a 5K1 to increase cancer awareness on Saturday, May 5, 2012, from 7:30 to 1:00 p.m. Resolution 021247, approved amendment of resolution R-021051 for reason 4, reason to pay financial in amount of 175.20 cents for year 2011, from Ikonoff Solutions, CEO Capital in tech solution for one vehicle, emptying a house and a ski, digital copier system, not to exceed 175.20 cents. Resolution 021248, approved request for use of city property requested by American Foundation for suicide prevention of three home in Jersey, location Bugle Park and Pavilion, for three mile walk color, Sunday, September 3, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Resolution 021249, approved request for parking of vehicles in Bugle Park requested by the Francis E. Parker Memorial Nursing Home for various social events, Sunday, June 3, 2012, from 6:45 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Wednesday, December 5, 2012, 2:45 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., number of vehicles, forty. Resolution 21250, approved request for street closing requested by Brockers University, location East Avenue alongside Christopher Restaurant between Neo and George Streets for Hope, St. Louis, Shalala Gala, Black Tie Event, Saturday, May 6, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Resolution 021251, approved rejection of unauthorized neighborhoodation for cemetery sewer improvement to Drift Street and Abundant Life Church. Resolution 021252, approved change order number 11, Julius Construction, Inc., addition to the Henry Guest House for the deposit-free public library, for interior and exterior painting and restoration and painting of existing windows, not to exceed 15,475. Resolution -021253, approved request for street closing requested by Our Lady of Mon Harbor RC Church, location Morris Street, George Street, and Winston Avenue for full private procession, Friday, April 6, 2012, from 7:15 p.m. to 8:15 p.m. Resolution R-021254, approved request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Recreation and San Peters Health Care System, location Bugle Park, Pavilion, and Sun Fields, for community health fair, in Saturday, May 5, 2012, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., Wednesday, Sunday, May 6, 2012, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 021255, approved request for use of city property requested by Deliverance Prayer Revival Tavern at the Church, location Peter Park, for youth gospel concert and crusade, Friday, the 8th, 2012, Saturday, June 16, 2012, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. Resolution 021256, approved request for use of city property requested by Deliverance Prayer Revival Tavern at the Church, location Peter Park, for youth gospel concert and crusade, Friday, August 17, 2012, Sunday, August 26, 2012, 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Resolution 021257, approved request for use of city property requested by Brockers Memorial Club, location Bugle Park, Roadway, and Pavilion, for longboard, skateboard, push race, in Sunday, April 15, 2012, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for Pavilion, and 12:45 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. on Roadway. Resolution 021258, approved emergency temporary appropriations for 2012. Resolution 021259, approved amendment of resolution 0112103, approved request for street closure and relaxation of noise ordinance, reason and extension of dates requested by Nordic Contracting for construction of stone sewer, waterline, and cemetery sewer closing. Street closure, New Street between George and Houston Street, January 21, 2012, and January 28, 2012, and February 4, 2012, alternate date, February 11, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The new dates are Saturday, February 25, 2012, March 3, 2012, and March 10, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 021260, approved relaxation of noise ordinance and road closure requested by Nordic Contracting, for the purpose of enjoying sewer line in New Street. Street closure, New Street, date Friday, February 17, 2012, from 12:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., alternate date Friday, February 24, 2012, time 12:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Resolution 021261, approved our contract with innovative data solutions for document management system for the police department, not to exceed $5,788. Resolution 021262, approved our contract with Gerard Kersner and Language Law Services for interpreters for the municipal court, not to exceed $16,500. Resolution 021263, approved amendment of resolution 011284, the reason Pentecostal Council Church of God requested a change in park usage mandates. Approved request for use of city property requested by Pentecostal Council Church of God, location Peter Park, for every religious event with speakers, students, and disco instrument, Saturday, August 45, 2012, 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Resolution 021264, approved amendment of resolution R-0121, the reason Pentecostal Council Church of God requested a change in park usage mandates. Approved request for use of city property requested by Pentecostal Council Church of God, location War Memorial Park, a religious event with speakers singing on musical instruments, Saturday, June 23, 2012, Saturday, September 22, 2012, from 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Resolution 021265, approved our grant for rehabilitation home improvement for Milton and Brenda Hicks, 275th Street, not to exceed 47,375. Resolution 021266, approved amendment of resolution 111142, the reason to correct language, authorized advertisement at the CILO PIS requested by Department of Engineering for South Quentin St. West Farm Station upgrade. Resolution 021267, approved amendment of resolution 010972, trailer site approval to Victory Cap. Resolution 021268, authorized tax collector to transfer over payments of several tax sewer and sewer accounts. Resolution 021269, authorized advertisement at the CILO PIS requested by Department of Engineering for sanitary sewer cleaning and internal video inspection. Resolution 021270, City of New Brunswick Grants is Consent to Defiant by Farrington Manor, Inc., an application for development related to Block 309.04, Lot 1.03.
There's one more resolution having to do with authorization to apply for green agents funding that has to be intimated for improvements to recreation park and copies of the resolution will be out there on the radiator for the other side.
When will we have resolutions?
It would end in seven.
021271. So that concludes every review of the agenda. Now the meeting is formally called order with the pair of these folder room.
Council President Racine is absent, Council Member Barladi.
Here.
Council Member Escobar.
Here.
Council Member Egan.
Here.
And Council President, um, Council Member Cook is absent.
Please be advised that the notice of apartment of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied with the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an applicable authority board of loving of City Hall, New Jersey, and has been transmitted through official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, limited, and therefore all.
We would like to take a moment to one of those Americans, an Iraqi, who knows her guys in the Iraqi war. Thank you.
Also the people that were killed in New Brunswick this time.
At this time, I would like to welcome their Armenian delegation here, we know visiting the City of New Brunswick, Miss Stumpkin, if you want to introduce them, you'll refer to us very quickly.
Good evening, everybody. We are here within the framework of the program organized by the Library of Congress, Open World Program. We are here in New Brunswick for the first time, and we have both two types of exchange, it's cultural exchange program and legislative exchange program. It's our pleasure to be here and to be present at this meeting. Thank you very much for this opportunity. So we represent the Republic of Armenia and the National Assembly of the Republic of Armenia, and it's our pleasure to be present in a meeting which represents the local democracy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Fellow residents, can we keep the choir, please?
Yes.
So that way you could hear us and we could give you. You can hear me? Because I can scream loud.
No.
I missed the part where you went into the agenda. Could I respectfully request that since so many people from across New Brunswick have come here with heavy issues on their backs, that maybe we leave the public comment here to the top of the agenda, so that everyone can get a chance?
We have so many things, I do understand you, we have so many things to cover, so I think that if we do it quickly, everybody will get a chance to talk and get to that part. So I'd rather continue with the meeting and you will get, the public will get the chance. Thank you. We're going now. I forgot to tell you, to remind you to state your name and address, please, when you get up and talk and you're acknowledged. Let's go into the ordinance on second reading. Order 0-071109-9, resolution - ordinance - 071109-1, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, solid waste collection disposal, that one we are...
We can motion to carry it to the next server.
I make, I make motion to carry this item to our next meeting, March 7.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Ordinance -021201, an ordinance amending ordinance number 0... Can I have a motion? It's a salary ordinance based on the Municipal Employees Association, are repeating ordinance or part of it inconsistent their work for 2011 to 2013, and 2014 collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, thank motion.
Second.
Any comments from the public on this specific ordinance? In non-rope.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. We're going now, ordinance for discussion, this first reading, this is on first reading only. Ordinance -021202, this is the one conveyance certain property to the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick, and I have a motion.
I make a motion setting down, uh, March 7th to, say, date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance -021203, this is the ordinance guaranteed by the City of New Brunswick, um, not to exceed 40 million, aggregate principal amount of city guarantee parking revenue responding bonds, serious 2012A for the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick. And can I have a motion to have this, I make a motion setting down, well, March 7th for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance -021204, this is the ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, to clarify time to cap fees. Can I have a motion to...
I make a motion setting down March 7th for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance 021204, this is the ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, right turn or left prohibited, George Street and Albany Street.
I make a motion setting down March 7th for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Now, uh, we're going to resolutions. We have resolution... I apologize. First meeting, I apologize. Order 021206, an ordinance to amend and supplement, this is the city traffic and parking, to delete two residential handicap parking zones, Barget and Townsend, and add three residential handicap parks, Barget, Townsend, and South Ward.
I make a motion setting down, uh, Wednesday, March 7th, for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Order 021207, this is the, an ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, involving records.
Make a motion setting down March 7th, uh, for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Order 021208, this is an order to authorize the sale of certain property to the City of New Brunswick, the House and Authority of the City of New Brunswick.
I make a motion for public hearing, Wednesday, March 7th, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Your call.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. Now we're going to resolutions. Hi, Mr. Fattig. There you go. Uh, resolutions, 021239 to resolution... 021271. Except... 241, which was fuller the request of the city clerk. That's the only one that was full. We have the grants, which is there, it's us two. So can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, improve the resolutions.
Second. Any residents, public would like to comment about any of the resolutions that were presented? Yes, Mr. Fattig.
Number 44, is the Port Tavern, what's, what's going on with that?
They say bankruptcy petition is filed, this is stout, or this is trustee bankruptcy, it's like some test, we don't say their name, like...
I'm sorry, whose name is it?
The lady's name, here.
Peggy Southport.
Okay, trustee, thank you. And, uh, just reminded you, the sanitary sewer improvements to Drift Street and Abundant Life Church, um, what's the update on the Remsen Avenue sewer improvements? Are those moving ahead?
We are, we're very close to getting, um, the approval by the DDP to proceed, we're negotiating with the contractor, he's ready to mobilize, so you, uh, may see some action there.
So I, I don't know if I understand change orders. So, uh, this is change order number 11 for the Henry Guest House, does that mean this is the 11th change order on that entire project, or just with this one contractor, or is that one of the same?
There was an allowance on the original contract of $50,000, working on one of his historic buildings, odd things happen and come up. We have finally gotten to the end of that, of that 15,000 dollars, and going ahead and getting interior painted, and the exterior windows painted, and the trim done, that hadn't been included in the original, because if we didn't have enough money, you could do without.
Understood. Sorry, I need to get the board. So the, uh, the 67, the trailer site for Victory Cap, um, I don't know if we have the roll reservation here, but under 67, it seems to be, uh, perhaps the identical one that was passed years ago to set up the trailer in the first place.
Now, sir, change your date to, I think, May the first, it should be March 1st, or anything, and look at it, apparently it's been out mid-year, 2011, so this is a motion, changes that one date in the original.
Okay, well, I think some of the warehouse clauses don't make sense anymore, but nevertheless, uh, what is, what exactly is going on, the exact trailer that's currently there is being made permanent?
No, same here till May the 1st.
Okay, just till May the 1st, and then where is the new home going to be?
That's up to them.
Okay. And, uh, one more, sorry, two more. The, uh, sanitary sewer and internal video inspection, is the video inspection, uh, normally something that, that you undergo with this type of work?
Yes.
It's a, um, it's a good process to understand whether the pipes are in good shape or not.
And where exactly is this happening in the city?
I think at Farby's locations, um, um, Golden, do you have a...
I'm not sure, is he talking about the resolution that we are providing for extent, relaxation of the noise ordinance, or the authorization advertised for...
Advertised.
Yeah, there's 44,000 approximately feet of pipe that were going video throughout the city to identify any problems, infiltration, all which, all the phone and pipe, and we get charged for about 70, so we're trying to cut that down.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to prolong this, the last one is the number 70, the, uh, development relating to Block 30904, where is that, and what is the development?
A property in East Brunswick, adjoining Farrington Manor, and there's a long time lease between the city and Farrington Manor, which was, I guess it was renewed last year or new owners came in, they're going to make some renovations out there, and they're doing it the right way, they're getting our consent for them to make their application to East Brunswick, and we'll get a chance to look at their proposed plans before they file.
Sure, thank you.
Any other comment from the public regarding the resolutions that we just read? Any other comment from the public regarding the resolutions that we just read? Have we known it?
I want the resolutions.
Bob Mayen from Home Use Degree, I wonder if you could just explain what's going on with the Port Tavon, so a twelve-year-old could understand it?
I don't think you can. There's an application, there's a bankruptcy petition that was filed. I don't know who filed it, none of our business, but it's been filed. The trustee in bankruptcy has the name, she has applied to have the license transferred over to her while proceeding is underway.
Is she, is she an attorney for the owner of the bar?
She's not an attorney for the bar. I believe she is an attorney, but she's appointed by the bankruptcy court. And you, I believe the clerk's office will have on file, maybe not much more than that, but that's an idea. You can certainly check in the bankruptcy court if you wanted to see more.
Have you got other comments, local?
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes. At this point, um, I recall discussion by City Council, Yumanelli's Restaurant, do we have any? Yes, so again, you have any?
Yes, the, the police ban, because they're on site, they're part of this, we can plan for that to continue. I don't want to talk about any other police tactics that are being employed. But it's a situation that the police department and this council wants to monitor. It will be on future agendas and hopefully quiet, but it's not, there are certainly some contingency plans that have been talked about that could be put in place.
Thank you. And, um, I think that, you want to talk a little about the record ordinance?
Yes, we introduced it on first reading, um, the police department has recommended, um, the issuance of an eighth, uh, record license based on our population change in the most recent census. I think we're at fifty-five thousand and change. The ordinance allows for a license for every six thousand, uh, residents. Might be a good opportunity to raise some, some revenue in the two thousand and twelve budget as well. Uh, so the ordinance is geared towards approving the eighth license and subjecting that to an auction.
At this point, the floor is open to the public, any, before that? Before that, any council members, anybody has anything to mention to the public?
No.
Before going to the public part of the meeting, let me remind you again, I ask you please to state your name. State your address. And let's do this in a respectful and clear manner, and can you raise your hand so that way I'm able to acknowledge you? Because I don't want to miss you if you don't raise your hand. The floor is open. Anybody wishes, yes, sir.
The floor is open.
Yes, uh, yeah, I have something I would really like to address.
Name and address, please.
My name is Nathaniel Williams, fifteen B Hampton Road.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm pretty sure, I don't know if y'all, city or council members are familiar with this? When y'all sued me and my wife for six thousand and sixty-three hundred dollars? I know Gaten and Hamilton are familiar with.
I am not familiar with.
Okay, this is, this is just an example how they sued us. But the guy that they defended gave the city a two thousand dollar bill. He gave them a two thousand dollar bill. He gave one to the construction's own company, and he gave one to the electric company, uh, Kenny Crew. Saying that he would do the work for two thousand dollars. But then, right here, you know, y'all bill here, it says, before the final inspection is made. Before a final payment is made, it's gotta be a final inspection. There was never a final inspection. Now, icing up the cake. Then they went this low, then he turns around and give them a sixty-five hundred dollar bill. Sixty-five hundred dollar bill, and they paid. And then, on top of it, because he ran this temper tantrum, they lied and said that we got money from a crack program. We never even went to a, a crack program and applied for any money. And I write to the planning board and ask them to send me a copy of the original application that we supposed to file. This was they son's, a blank copy, because we never filed. So ain't that breaking their own law?
Yes.
And and I'm still being forced to pay for something that got condemned. Because the dude never did the work right in the first place, and Gaten and her friends came and condemned it. And said the work was never, uh, done right, but yet they sued us. And I'm still being forced to pay the, the city money that we never got from them. And then they also caused my wife to lose her job for seventeen years, working for the courthouse. And then, not only that, to keep all this out of court, every time we get a court thing, William Hamilton and Gaten bring us in the ca- uh, chamber room and deny us our court. We came and get due process, we came and con- confront our accusers. Then they said we gave a fake D, they stole my identification, but they covered up for that too. And then all the violations that the lady had on the house, since the house was in her name from two thousand and five, all the way up to two thousand and seven, they swept it up the rug. So when I got my house back in two thousand and seven, they was right there at the front door. Right there, and then what Gaten and Hamilton do, they bring me over here to City Hall. He saw me, I had my attorney and I was right here in this mock court, denied my due process. Denied me again to con- uh, uh, confront my accusers, they covered up for them again. But they, but the Attorney General do have all that.
Uh, Mr. Williams, I have no idea, or you talking about?
They do, these two do, well.
They should say something.
Yeah, yeah, let's say, I want to hear what they have to say.
Let the community liaison say something.
Excuse me, if you let me finish, you see what happens when we start making noise that we don't listen? I asked before you started making noise that if Mr. Hamilton or Mrs. Gaten wanted to make a comment, and you started, you know, going.
But you started laughing too, like it was fun.
Yeah, it was funny, even when my son got put in a hospital on technical care for Kenny Crew cutting line, without even going to a judge and getting the court order to do it, then all that's funny to them. But I almost, my son almost died from that.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hamilton told Mrs. Gaten, do you want to say something about it?
I don't think there's anything funny about what happened. All of you who just cheered when you heard Mr. Williams, I invite you to go look at the records yourself. If you need any records from the city, they'll give them to you.
Here, go, here, go right here. On side.
Nobody interrupt the tune, Mr. Williams.
Let's wait for our turn, remember, thank you, thank you. My, my, if we don't have any information as city council members, so you have what Mr. Hamilton said? If you want to further give us the information, you could give it to the city here, so we can just give us that information to us. Anybody else would like to? Anybody else would like to address the council? Name, okay, Mr. Pittman.
My name is Tomell Pittman. I reside at two ninety-one Seamer Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. No mystery why we're here, let's stop playing. You know why we're here. Because a nineteen-year-old man got shot in the back by the New Brunswick Police Department. We were here September, doing the same exact thing. Because a forty-seven-year-old man got killed by the New Brunswick Police Department. And the reason why we're here, well, first off, I like, I like, I'm very proud of the community in New Brunswick. Look, look to the left of you. That's the first time they're on the outside looking in. We've been going through this our whole stay in New Brunswick, and it feels good for them to be on the outside looking in at us. Let me continue. September twenty-second, a man got killed. Now, we're coming to these meetings looking for answers. Looking for the community administration to do something about the police. I want to know from September to February, what change was made within the police department to stop us from being harassed by the New Brunswick police? If not, if, if no changes have been made from September to February, then the City of New Brunswick must take responsibility for the shooting of Victor Rodriguez. If there ever been one change in the procedure, procedure of those officers, then they are responsible for what took place in February. And the council is fully aware, December seventh, I came and asked the council to set up a meeting with me and the mayor. I've been calling the mayor from the beginning of November up until January. He ducked my calls, he sent me to, uh, what's the guy with the, uh, the mock, the made-up position, um?
Which one?
Mango, mango, something, one of those guys, but he keeps sending me to different people. And, and, and he's ducking, for some reason, he's ducking my calls. I go to Garfield, New Jersey, every town while meeting, the mayor's present. Every protest, the mayor's present. So I have more access with a mayor in Garfield, New Jersey than I do my own mayor that I would want to arrange it. So I want to know what is taking place? Because Victor Rodriguez's name would have never been brought up if we didn't come down here with thirty to forty people. You guys have been going on with business as usual.
That's right.
And business can't go on as usual. And we gotta get here five o'clock every day and fill up these seats, so you guys can stay outside, then we'll do that.
That's right.
But we're willing to do that until we get some answer. We have a police director that have yet to address the public after two shootings. After two shootings, the police director has yet to address the public, but then we find out that he's on two vacations. He's been on vacation when Barry Deloche was killed, and then he's on vacation when Victor Deloche got shot, I mean, when Victor Rodriguez was shot.
Yes.
But this is a guy that says he never takes vacations. So we want answers, we want some serious answers, because the problem is gonna increase. Just like this, on the outside looking in, that's about to become a culture. That's about to become a culture, because the community is tired. The Latinos are tired, the blacks are tired, the whites are tired. And some answers tonight, and I don't want to hear that you're gonna get back to me, we want answers now.
You know, I mean, that the answer and probably you don't like it, but I cannot comment on anything that's investigated right now. The only thing that I can tell you that I know personally, in terms of what the police, you know, things that have been going in the police department, they have, we just last month, you know, approved an amendment to have the auxiliary police, so there should, you know, there, there should be more citizens out there holding out with the police, you know, with, with the police. I know there is, through some community organizations that have been dealing with the police department, I know there is some walking patrols in some of the areas, in certain areas of the city, including Bremson Avenue, um, Commercial Avenue, French Street, Somerset, and I'm using another part. That's what we know. So I know there's, you know, you know, we have been making, there's so many recommendations that have been forth, forward, that we're working on. So that's all I can tell you in terms of what.
You got the wrong idea, you just explained to me how you put more police in different areas. Our problem is the police. So you can put, you can put them on bikes, you can put them on horses, you can let them walk through the city. Our problem is the police. And a lot of people listen, this is, this is the problem with the community. A lot of people say, listen, these cops are great, they're doing a great job, well, you take them in. You take them to your community. We don't want them.
We don't want them.
We don't want them, we don't have no trust in them, we can't, we can't go, if we feel like the officer violated us, we're treated like the, we're treated like the monsters when we go to put an internal affairs complaint. We're seeking, we have no way of seeking justice.
No way.
No way.
So you think that I will, you know, question you, but that you have your entitled to your opinion, I respect that. Uh, but not all the officers, you are generalizing about police officers.
No, I didn't generalize.
Let me finish, let me finish.
The mayor's the words in my mouth, I'm not gonna let you do that either.
I listen to you, Mr. Pittman, can you listen to me? Thank you. In terms of the, the community, the community has been saying that they want, and you have been saying here, better community relations with the police. So we're trying to put programs that we have foster a very, better communication and a partnership with the community. And now you're saying that you don't want the police.
Yeah, no, 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 you know what I'm saying?
Police is still there, the police are not being put in place to enforce, it's just to create a more environment that is more a community environment.
This is what I'm saying, you tell me you're putting in place for better community relations, the police relation, but you sound like a hypocrite when the police just shoot. Alright, that was in process, but now a kid just got shot two weeks ago, so that's off the table.
We're talking about the different things.
No, we're not.
You are mixing one thing with the other, but I thank you for your comment, anybody else?
No, I'm not finished talking to you. I'm not finished talking to you. I'm not finished talking to you.
Can you let somebody else speak?
Victor Rodriguez, seventy-two Lewis Street, New Brunswick. Zero eight nine zero one. Aye.
Victor Rodriguez, if you talk to us, that I will hear you, because if you try to kind of hear you.
Yes, uh, I'm gonna speak on behalf of everyone here. I am Victor Rodriguez's family member, and I represent the Rodriguez's family. And we come just to voice now here and looking for our rights. We, Victor was an equivalent, so that's why we're so looking for answers. We are losing faith in, um, government at this point, because we know what is right and what is wrong. And so, we know that what happened to Victor was an injustice, but I feel like, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little afraid that justice won't be served, provided that we have a history of police brutality in the community, that some of them, uh, have been, um, kind of unjustified. But I want to clarify that I'm not against the police, I actually like the police, um, I like, um, for them to keep it safe. But I also see that when someone does wrong, that I believe that they should get punished.
Excuse me, Mr. Hamilton.
I believe that, uh, if we break the law, we right away, we, we receive our punishment for it. So I think that we should, uh, the police should also receive punishment for what they did to Victor, because, well, I know that Victor, uh, everyone knows the case here, I'm just gonna briefly state the case, um, uh, you guys refresh your memory. That Victor was, um, amongst a lot of, of adolescents at that moment, and he felt threatened, and he happened to have the, uh, like a, almost like a BB gun, like a black gun, seemed like a real gun. Excuse me. Seemed like a real gun, so he shot two, two rounds in the air, and all of, and just to, so everybody can leave because he felt threatened. So we know that he wasn't supposed to have that gun, but he did. And, but he received, like, he started receiving shots all of a sudden, on the back, on the, in one of the body, like, three shots. He just told me, two days ago, how it happened. He received those shots, and then he took off, went to the side, threw the gun away, and he started raising his hand, he, he fell on the floor, and he, and a couple seconds later, I, maybe minutes later, he received two more shots on the leg. And to me, that seems that the police was trying to cover up for the mistake that they did, that they shouldn't have shot him, like, you know, on the back or whatever. But what I feel is, everyone makes mistakes, I know the police made a mistake in Victor, and, and other occurrences, instances, I'm gonna speak to everyone here, because everyone here is looking for justice, we're looking for, uh, there's a lot of, we feel like it's like a little corruption right now, so we're like, we're trying to end that up, so we can move on with our lives. We don't want to do protests, we have families to go to, uh, but it takes incidents like this, uh, it's such a tragedy for that to happen, for something new to come on, so for that we're happy, in, in a sense, because, uh, out of justice, something new happens, and we're hoping that, that Victor, what happens to, to Victor, that this will end. I think we're intelligent enough, we, and we know something's going on here. This has been our town since the early, early, uh, early eighties, we've been living here, we're not criminals. I don't think we have any criminal, any criminals in our family, any criminal records. The Rodriguez family is a game, and we're standing together, we're gonna fight, we've been here long enough in this country to know how to defend ourselves. So, we're, we're not gonna stop, and we're hoping that, that God's gonna bless, um, uh, those that are in charge of laws, that they do the right thing. Uh, we think that we're getting a little stronger in our mind to voice our opinion without, um, disrespecting anyone. But, um, I hope that you guys at least can listen, that, that's why we're here today, and this is the first time I come to the meeting, and, and, and this isn't embarrassing, because I know that as citizens, we're supposed to be in a meeting site, you know, like this. But I know that we have a lot of other things, you know, and other things that, that keep us so busy in our lives, you mean, you know, our fam- our families, and trying to move, move on and, and get better things in life. So, we apologize that this is the only time that we've been here, but, uh, we hope that you guys are at least listening to us.
One more question.
Yes.
Thank you. Another person would like to address the council?
You got like, I'll just say-
Father Williams. It's a father.
Tony, good?
Good.
Yeah, I mean, let's-
Good.
Okay. So, uh, I, I have a lot of, uh, questions, but, but first of all, I just wanna say that, you know, to everybody in the Rodriguez family, I, you know, I stand with you, keep up the fight, and, uh, I, uh, I'll be right there with you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say that, that, uh, I'm glad to see that, that folks are exercising their First Amendment rights, and I hope that, um, the authorities will respect those rights this time. And I know the council may disagree with, uh, some of, uh, Mr. Pittman's remarks and antics, but you would be well served to, uh, or at least the Constitution would be well served for you to write a letter on his behalf, uh, trying to get him off of the charges for protesting, because protesting's not a crime in this country. Nobody should ever be so- Um, so I have several issues to, to discuss, and I'll, I'll try to make it brief. But, uh, but first, I wanted to know, could somebody clarify the requirements for a meeting to be a public meeting, sort of the noticing requirements? For, for an open public meeting to meet the requirements of the state law, what are the requirements for notes? It has to be put in the paper, it has to, like, what are the-
We adopted a, uh, schedule at the beginning of the year, add a open public meeting. If any things get changed from that, on here, add a open public meeting. It's posted on the bulletin board downstairs, and it's carried to the state, put to it, and our official newspaper, or whatever.
And so that posting on the board downstairs, is that a requirement of the law?
Yes.
Um, and is that requirement also applies to boards and commissions, like the planning board and the zoning board? Well, and I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I, I do believe that the, the planning board had a meeting last night that was not properly noticed.
We'll look into it, find out.
The board downstairs still has the twenty-eleven meeting schedule, and, uh, I, I think it would be proper to, to know that.
Thank you, please.
Certainly. Uh, I also, I would commend the city on, on their new website. I think it's a, a big step in the right direction. And I think one of the things that makes a city website good is that it has those up-to-date meeting schedules. So just as they should be up-to-date in the downstairs, they should also be up-to-date on the website. And I think that would be a great thing to really, you know, make a, an integral part of the new web design. And I, I do commend the city for moving forward with that. Um, I, I wanted to ask about something I saw on the news. The Robeson School is one of the twenty projects that has been appropriated some money, or is moving forward. Can I get some updates on that and the Red Shaw School as well?
Anybody who's-
If we kept the article for us, we'll look into it, find out, doesn't look like anybody has that information.
Certainly. Well, uh, there's a good chunk of money coming for the Robeson School, which is welcome news, but is there any update on the Red Shaw School? I know, uh, Councilman Egan serves on the, the body that is-
And we talked about it, one of the meetings, and we reminded you, called the state, because they're the ones who, I don't release in the morning for that, but that's how we do it. Got the information, just the state, mostly, it's not the city.
Right, see, it's already that Mr. Egan's-
Yeah, what's happening now, Charlie, is that the, uh, the, the SDA is developing a plan for all schools, where it's gonna have a, uh, all schools are gonna be developed on one type of architectural building, along with all that right now. We, we all want the school to be built, but we can't wait to have it built. But the SDA is going through a process now of how to build them. So that school is first, and then Robeson will be second. So, that's what the process is.
I, I also wanted to ask a few questions about the police. I, I know you've mentioned the walking patrols, and you've mentioned the four foot patrols are sort of a, a new thing the police department's experimenting with. Can, uh, the captain or somebody who's here give any kind of insight into, like, how that's going, how many, you know, how many people are involved in that? Because I still have yet to see an officer on foot patrol in many months.
They don't go up over here to, uh, Remson and Lee and Truth where it, where it should be at. They should be up over there. Nah, I'm not gonna excuse me, because it's going all over the country right now. I understand that, but you need to listen for change. The man is asking you a question.
I kind of listen to you unless I acknowledge-
You know, the man is listening to us.
Mr. Claro, please tell me. Can you please? Thank you. Thank you. That's all I'm asking, just wait your turn. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Claro.
I, I do see that the captain over there, I was wondering if maybe he could, uh, like, maybe some more details about, uh, how they're going so far.
You don't look for me, she told you to talk, you told why you're talking.
Two officers are detailed on the Remson Avenue corridor and the French Street corridor, manpower permitting regularly to walk during the afternoon and weekends, I believe it is.
But I expected that information, when they say those people have a club, you decide, you don't have, uh, the hands, the, the community, the, the talking, so they have to, they have to-
Terrific, that would be, that would be much appreciated. Um, I also wanted to ask about the auxiliary police, any idea how many applications were received and are the deadline passed?
We have, um, you know, we have, uh, previously, possibly thirty-six applications. We've advanced to five eleven. Um, and there was one more who came in, and we are, uh, I think we're going to start with an academy of twelve people. The, the academy starts Saturday, March third. The oral interviews are sometime next week, because that's one of the requirements on the ordinance, is that they all, uh, have to go through an oral interview. So, um, we're going to start the academy at twelve.
Uh, so the police residency, I, I again commend the council for, for advancing that resolution. Uh, is anybody gonna sponsor that in Trenton? Have we talked to anybody?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'll reach out.
Resolution is essential.
Well, same as, as you know, I will send the, the, we have a hearing.
Okay. Okay, I just, I'm just trying to move it forward. I think it's a good thing we all agree on it, so, um, just a, a couple more updates. The special needs housing that was approved, uh, over the summer, can anybody update me on, uh, the timeline for that? It's okay, it's okay. And I guess, I, I, I'll ask Mr. Patterson some questions later, I guess. The one other thing I did want to point out, I think this, this meeting really proves it, that we need some better amplification for, for not just the speakers who are speaking from the public, but also the council. We need to hear what you're saying, and I, and I think that, um, moving ahead with that would be, would be just, just great.
I'm waiting on that one.
Okay, good.
Don't worry.
Thank you.
Mr. Pittman?
For the record, I, I just wanted to dispel a myth, I'm against police officers. I'm fully aware of what took place Thursday on Gildan Street, around seven-thirty. Seventeen-year-old kid brandished a weapon at police officers. What the police officers did was tackle the young man down, arrested him, apprehended him, and took him to the detention center. That was good police work. They made a conscious decision to do something right, and it was good. I don't know the officers' names. I don't have a problem with getting on my forehorn and yelling those officers' names, because they did the right things. But we can't let the officers off the hook that did the wrong thing. That's my position. I'm not against police officers. And also, I wanna comment on the situation that happened with Victor Rodriguez. Okay, right, the young man, it was an altercation that took place. Young man pulled out a weapon, started up. He fired two times in the air, twice. Then he got hit in the back five times by police officers. Now, in the defense of the police officers, they had no idea whether that was a real gun or not. They had no idea. But the thing is, the, the police officers also had no idea whether Victor had a gun permit or not. They had no idea whether he, he was a licensed gun, he didn't aim it at anybody, he fired two shots. He could have been a store owner that was about to get robbed, fired two shots. The police didn't give him an opportunity to respond to command.
Never do.
That's the problem. Stop, freeze, put your gun down. No, then, reps on Remson Avenue, they see a guy with a gun shooting in the air, pop, 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 pop. So let's not make the, let's not give the impression that these officers did, they did something wrong.
Right.
You have to give a person the opportunity to respond to command. And the reason I get you, I talk to officers, they tell me these things. But you have to give them that responsibility. They had no idea whether that gun was real, and they had no idea whether he was a licensed gun owner. Let's focus on that.
I wanna apologize, I mean, uh, my name's Al-
Can I address us, so that we can hear you?
My name's Al, Jr., Chacor, and, uh, Lickson Avenue.
Thank you.
I wanna apologize for, uh, your passion, you know? And I wanna say, I don't know, I don't know a lot of people in this room, and, uh, I feel for you, because my brother got shot in the back of the head in New Bedford, Massachusetts. So, and we all know this. I mean, if you're living in America today, you know this. You know, I'm not saying not to do this, do this. This is a step, because there's a lot of us still out there on Remson, Lee, Truth, Oakland, LA, wherever, that don't care. So it's a step, but what I'm saying is, they ain't listening, man. So it's up to us to, to do what we gotta do to police our own neighborhoods. I, I'm dead serious, stop fighting each other and start fighting them. Because they don't care, they're going to Somerset, they're going to Bedminster, they're going to Baskin Ridge.
We know.
They don't care, man. And that's how this whole country's gotten. They don't care about you. Look at Greece, look at Egypt. Look all over the world, man. We're the only country with the most resources, with the most power in the people, like Chuck D said, that don't do nothing, because we got iPods, PlayStations, computers. I got women, I got the most, brand-new movie came out with Denzel, I gotta go see the movie, instead of hitting the law library, instead of hitting the books, instead of Googling stuff, instead of getting into their positions, instead of getting elected into the office. The mayor ain't here because the mayor don't care, he don't have to be here. He don't have to be here, because there ain't no pressure on him. The cops, listen, I didn't like the cops for longest, I got my reasons for that, but I'm beginning to realize these guys are just grunts. They're just there for a paycheck. A lot of them know what's going on, they don't like it either. It's the city officials. It's the policymakers, it's the lawmakers. And I'm asking all of you, and I'm asking you, Ms. Too, to please hear me out, to post it on Facebook, to do what you gotta do. Hit the books, and you're smiling, that's the problem. It's gonna happen again. You're smiling. But I'm being serious. Get into their positions, and then this will change. But the longer we sit here, ask them, "Can you do this for me, can you do that for me?" She's smirking, this guy's looking down at the table, she's getting up, whispering over here to this guy, this big guy, I don't know if he's eating a ham sandwich under the desk, but they don't care. Until you, I know you know that, brother, but what are we gonna do about it now?
Just re- just remember, I keep reminding that we ask, and I ask you very respectful-
I'm finished, I'm done, I'm done.
Be respectful, I don't think that is right.
I'm done, thank you.
Because we are respectful to you.
For the record, wait, wait. We have a question.
Is there somebody else, Mr. Pittman?
Let us speak.
Go ahead.
Understatement is, I speak for the vast majority, when we truly say we don't have a problem with the police. We just need the good cops to patrol our areas. We need the good cops to stand up, because I'm, I'm truly under the pre- the impression that majority of the police department, they are good cops. But the bad ones got such strong of a voice that the good cops are suppressed. And we're here, I, I don't just fight for the community of New Brunswick. I fight for the police officer that got it going, day in and day out, known as corruptness, and he gotta put his head down and ignore it. That's the problem, that's the, I fight for him too. When I'm on my bullhorn, when I'm putting signs up, that's who I fight for. Because you have a lot of officers, they know if they're one of the big contributors, the, the campaign contributors, they know they'll get elevated in their career. Like Mr. Lockton?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the real man. But you know, they know they'll get elevated in their career if they contribute. And I spoke to an officer, a New Brunswick Police Department officer. He said, "There's never been an officer that's been promoted that wasn't a campaign contributor." That's sad, that's where the problem lies. Because they know that they can do anything, but as long as they're paying that two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that five-hundred dollars, or that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that they're protected. And while the guy that comes in day in and day out, trying to make it back and forth to his family, his life is in danger because of these rogue officers that spent seven-fifty. We want the guy that, that's going in quiet and leaving out, we want him in our neighborhood. We don't want the guy that pays seven-fifty and feel like he can do what he wants. That's why we're here. And, and until that change, we're gonna continue to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
That's right.
Yes, my name is Kathleen Feeny. I lived at two-seventeen Handy Street, near, very near this troubled area, for twenty-six years. I sold my house and fled New Brunswick because I became afraid of the police. Because I spoke out, I became under threat. And it was Police Director Mangarella who called my local block club, where I served my community, and we discussed community issues, and told them to get rid of me, to get me out of there. He called Morris Kafka, and Morris Kafka lives on Livingston, and he's a community activist. And Morris said, "She's an elected vice president of the block club, there's nothing in our bylaws, I have no authority to remove her." And then Acting Police Director Mangarella said, "Remove her." That and other incidences in my neighborhood is why I fled. I spoke to my family, they said, "Honey, we don't want you dead. Sure the fight is noble, sure you see the injustices, sure you see the police brutality in the streets, we don't want you to be a victim of it, we love you." I had to sell my house at the bottom of the market at the request of my family, and now I stay with a friend in Milltown. I'd like to return to my hometown, New Brunswick, where I invested my entire life savings in a home I had to sell at the bottom of the market and leave because of the police terrorism, especially on people who speak out. Now, Ms. Escobar, there's been talk in these chambers about the corruption, and let's talk about that. Let's talk about the vote and the election. When you and Mr. Egan were on the ballot, Kevin Jones, who served the mayor's office as an aide, was found in the park and filmed on video, it's up on Facebook and YouTube.
Where?
We seen it.
I was assaulted by a man, you see.
He was sitting on a bench in a public park with a large amount of absentee ballots on his lap, and he was not authorized, he had not sought permission, to be someone who could handle ballots. In fact, if you do go through that process, as many of us did who were campaigning for his opponent, Miss Bombleton, you're only allowed to handle ten at a time. Had a stack of forty-seven. He was photographed by Gideon Weisberg. Gideon Weisberg then got on the phone to an attorney, a Mr. Bill Aiello, who returned with a video camera, it was all video. They appeared before Judge DeVisar, providing criminal judge, and he found probable cause to charge him with vote tampering. He was so charged. The FBI came in and raided the county office, the election board. It, the, you tell us, get the right people elected, but they fixed the vote, and that's why we feel we don't get any response from this government. You don't have to account to us, because you controlled vote illegally. Why has not Kevin Jones been prosecuted? What is to say? There's just two more instances of burning corruption that we face while our kids are taking bullets and the blood's on the corner. The other is Sheriff Spicuzzo is now under indictment, our county sheriff, for selling police badges to goons who are not trained, who do not dress as police, who do not conform to the uniform. They wear undercover clothes partially, but they have on one piece of police gear so they can intimidate us and act like they might be police. They watch us, they follow us, they sit outside our homes. When we protest, they're on the corner with cameras. The purpose is intimidation. They are not dressed as police, nor are they dressed as undercover, intending to be unknown as some kind of law enforcement general person. They're out there in this odd gear, which I'm sure that our police captain can tell us is utterly improper, violates the standard operating police procedures and codes. And they're out there, and they're operating to intimidate us.
We ain't scared.[1784.01]
And we wonder, in this burning scandal, Sheriff Spicuzzo, having been accused broadly by honest officers that have been referred to, to be selling badges to bums who aren't qualified. And they're operating out there. How many of them in our street? Don't tell me none, Ms. Escobar, I'll cite to you the people who have been in my office telling me they barged in my house without a warrant, and some story that they were looking for some guy that they thought I knew once, who worked for me once, and then he looked into where that guy is, and he's locked up, they know exactly where that guy is. I know the homes they come into. These undercover sheriff's department operatives are working in Ward 2, in this poor neighborhood, where they believe the people are so oppressed, and that they've lost credibility with the system because they've been arrested and shaken down so many times, that they can get away with this stuff, Ms. Escobar. It's going on. So I think that this board could look into and reassure this community as to what's going on. Who is, who are these operatives on our street? We deserve some kind of response to the scandal that our county sheriff engaged in this and is indicted for it. And there's no reassurance to the community. No reassurance that these men, the ones who are suspected, are not operating in the community, these aren't the ones you're facing, and seeing them draw their guns and recklessly chasing you down. They drive their cars right onto the sidewalk when they think they have a suspect. Crippling anybody around. They jump out in their t-shirts and their muscles bulging, and they take these guys down right in front of all of us. This is intimidating everyone. This is why this crowd isn't six times this size. There are lots of good people out here, and they're not here because they're afraid. They're afraid of this kind of operation, it's gotta stop. And there's another burning scandal in New Jersey related to police that we need to discuss here. A doctor who was writing bad steroid prescriptions died in his office. This is a public story. They went in and looked at who he was issuing bad prescriptions of steroids to. 500 police officers, Ms. Escobar, were his clientele. These mood-altering steroids that cause rage.
What county?
The doctor was up, was not in this county, but the police officers, his clients, were from all over. Do we get any reassurance from our police director that he's looked into, steroid abuse? Why in the world would these guys be so jacked up, that they're getting out of their cars with guns drawn, when they're not even on a call? No one from the community is some of them. What is going on? We're observing this behavior, that's reported in the paper, that's agreed by Prosecutor Kaplan, that's part of the facts of the story of how Barry Deloche took a bullet when he was running in fear from two officers and get out of the car, guns drawn. They're in all kinds of attire, partial police, partial undercover, total undercover. Some appear to be in police cars, in full police gear, in proper uniform. And this is what we're subjected to in Ward 2. There are open sewers. If you'd let me tell you exactly where they are, I'll go into those details. I called Donna Caputo, she knows me by first name, an open sewer. A pregnant woman sitting on the porch in front of it, children playing around it, deep enough for an infant to fall in. Report, report, report. Eventually, they come out and they put some little cones around it that a two-year-old could knock down and still fall into the oozing water and litter and trash and everything, it smells. On Semin Street. The infrastructure is falling apart. The neighborhood is neglected. We don't need to tell you this, drive through it, look at it. We're not getting services over there. The garbage men come and pick up the garbage, half goes in the truck, half goes on the street, and they move on. The street sweeper comes with equipment that is not good enough to pick up the toxic oil that our kids run through in flip-blocks and track into the house and sleep in then. It's toxic. The level of lead in our kids' blood is way elevated in New Brunswick. We, there are just so many problems, Ms. Escobar. You ask this community to be polite and identify ourselves and give our addresses so that we can be stopped, so that they can sit outside of our house the way they do, so that you know exactly who the protesters and the big mouths are, so you can shut them up and wear us out, and eventually we'll go away, and it will be shake-down business as usual. Many police officers on the New Brunswick Police Department are slumlords in this town. They are not policing us, they are shaking down their tenants when they're on duty for excess rents because they can, they can get away with it. They're speculating on real estate, and they are buying it, and they own it, and they do not live in this town, they come here to exploit us. So let's not kid around, let's get busy and fix it. It's gotta change, this community wants peace, it deserves to grow and prosper. Not always had the boot of the neck of these operators, why not even ensure their legitimate lease that act like this in Ward 2.
Now, I'm not gonna be wrong, but I have a solution.
Is there somebody else, you know, there's two people, so.
I got a good idea.
Just on Mateo, 140 Remus Street. I've been living in New Brunswick for the past 12 years. I moved from Brooklyn back in 2000 for the same situation I see here already. Cops, all over Spanish, black, forcing people to be afraid. Now I got my son, four years old, he go in New Brunswick. And I see a lot of young people here, 15, 25, and soon, they're gonna have kids. They wanna save the community, they don't wanna be moving out of state because the situation is going on right now. We all standing here, young, trying to avoid if something happened to our anybody, family, any son. I moved back in 2000, and I see problems keep going up and up. Abusing. I mean, I don't know somebody here from New York back in 97, 2000, Brooklyn, Bronx, still worse right now. My point is, my son, I don't wanna come home, one day he found the news, something happened, somebody shot a gun, missing bullet, hit my son. Looks to me like I speak for young people here. I don't wanna ride home with the bad news, because somebody missed a shot, or shoot somebody by mistake. The police didn't know how to use his gun, his training weapon, he's supposed to perfect use it, drawing when it's supposed to be, and missing bullet can hit anybody on the street. That's why I moved out of Brooklyn. My son's four years old. I just don't wanna get anybody news, I don't wanna move out of New Brunswick. This is a nice place to live. I got my own house, and I just, like the old lady here, sold his house to move out. The house is my son's future, and I don't wanna lose, I don't wanna move. I speak for everybody here who's young, I'm just 33 years old. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jasmine. I am a citizen of New Brunswick, a resident of Ward 2. I'll give you my P.O. box, it's 574-3. I guess the reason why I'm asking, I'm up here, it's my second or third time here. I was here for the Deloche protests, now I'm here for the Rodriguez tragedy. I offer my people and citizens family. I heard you say that there is some sort of, like, programs and, what's happening to make me feel safe on my block, which is Handy Street? What have you done since Barry Deloche was murdered to make me feel safe on my block? When I take a walk out of my house to go to a bodega after the night has fallen, I fear the police more than I fear the people of my community. I feel safe seeing the people of my community. I see the policemen, I get scared. I don't know if I'm about to get killed. What have, what has the police department done, put in place, anything? Please tell me something that they have done, some change that has happened to make me feel safe on my block, which is Handy Street?
Yeah, I think that I can tell you, like I mentioned before, there is, there's a security and trying to establish, you know, there's crime watch, there's a crime watch in your area, have you joined it? Because that's a platform to say what are the safety issues and the safety concerns that as a group of citizens, so excuse me, Mrs. Pevey, I'm talking and she's talking.
I'm Dave Sirk, the crime watch.
Excuse me, but again.
Join the crime watch, Jasmine, that works.
If you want a platform to talk, you know, join the crime watch, you have a platform there, you go to the rest of this to address the issues. It might not, because I have it here, it might not be so obvious that you have, but the police department, you know, the concerns that you have for the police department, for the police department.
Just thinking about what Pamela had mentioned earlier, about the fact that if nothing has been done since Barry was murdered by the police department, then the tragedy of Victor West on your hands, and I, I just want to reiterate that I support that statement. I feel very unsafe on my block every single day of my life, from the police. Thank you.
I understand, like, you guys are trying to put different programs together for the police, you're saying you put more, put more police on patrol. My best friend that I've worked with since I was about three years old, he's a police officer. He's an officer in the plainfield. He talks on a daily basis. And you know, he gave me an idea, he said, you know, you know what the plainfield police officers do? Soon as they get on the force, they got like baseball cards. They got their face up there, they got all their information. And what they do is they go throughout the community passing these cards out to everybody. So if a cop grabs you up and slams you on the ground, you know you have his card. He's not as lucky to do that. See, the reason they do what they do to us, because we have no idea. Just two weeks ago, I'm on a Victor Rodriguez scene, we got an officer in uniform, no badge on him, I said, hey, where's your badge at? Go down to the police department and find out who I am. You serious? No, I just wanna know your name. Go down to the police department and find out who I am. That's when we get true, wow, they're taped around Semin Street of a man that just got shot. So I think if, instead of, you know, putting more officers, when you can put those officers in every, and when they walk the beat, send them with a stack of cards so they can pass out to the community, so we'll know exactly who they are.
We have to bring up something, Mr. Pevey. You know, suggestions, because I hear a lot of here, 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 but I don't hear.
But you understand, we're frustrated.
Absolutely, and I believe you understand. I know that in the past, the police department here, I know that their officers and the great officers, they do have giving baseball cards to the kids. So I know that, I'm not sure if this continues to do so, but they used to do that.
We need all the officers.
But that's a very good idea.
We need every.
I will bring it up, in one of the meetings I'm gonna have with community members, and to bring ideas into how to improve relations between the police and the community. I hope it's a good idea, thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council before, yes, sir?
Ms. Dexter Torres. Hello, I'm back again. Henry Torres, 2600 Cameraman. I'm a speaker, I'm passionate about everything I do. So, it's a shame that we have two shootings within a year, and no answers yet, that's the first thing. I've never seen a city like that. We have a major university, a state university, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and everything from this side on Blackadder Way is straight, straight to the point and disrespected. They don't respect us at all, anybody who lives from this side to Blackadder Way. And I feel that, I mean, I'm a person who's not perfect. I used to fight the police with my hands, and now I try to fight it with my mind. There's police officers in this room right now that have personal problems with it. And I can honestly say I do not have any ill feelings toward them right now, because I'm a changed person. But every time we come here, you never have answers. Every single time. But you have papers there for everybody else for any other issues? This thick, you have answers for them. Something has to change, and I said it last time I was here, and the time before that, and the time before that. You people have voices. How can we get help if you're not gonna help us? You meet with the mayor, you meet with these guys, you meet with Capulo, you have our voices. There's nothing else we can do, but when, once a cop is shot here, and I hate to say that, you imagine the streets, how it's gonna be. Every fourth hour, it's gonna be out there, five shootings by the end. And if it was somebody in your family, you'll be right on the side right now. I guarantee it. And I don't wanna waste that on your family, but it's almost to that point. I mean, there's no answer, there's never an answer, you have the rookies, the young boys, in the ghettos of New Brunswick, and you have the good cops in the good community in New Brunswick. Isn't that backwards? That's telling me that you want to just get rid of us, that's what it's telling me. That's what it's telling me, because there's no future, there's no help. There's no, I don't even see their program around. Even the cops that died, which I wish they still was here, and the retired ones, because those are the ones who I respect are going up. You have cops from North coming in now, yeah, we know this. You have cops from Trenton coming in now, yes, we know this. So what are they learning? Oh, we shooting cops out here in New Brunswick, oh, hey, guys, join us. Shoot with us, you're used to it in North and Trenton, make New Brunswick just as worse. I just don't understand, it really hurts my heart, it makes me want to cry, literally. Because I changed, I used to fight every single day. And I don't know what else you want people to do. When they start shooting and fighting and all that to police, then it's gonna be, well, my west side here. And then you're still gonna blame the people in New Brunswick. So be damned if you don't, be damned if you do. Now you got a guy sitting up there in the length of the hospital, possibly paralyzed for having a fake gun, yes, he should have had a fake gun in there. You shoot him three times, and then when he's on the ground, you shoot him two more times? That's ridiculous. It doesn't make any sense in any city right now. What's going on in this city, I don't understand, this is a major city in New Jersey. A major city, and we can't get any police force or any police agency in this state to come in and help out. I do not understand that at all. And I only speak from the heart, I don't speak for answers, because you guys never have answers. So I'm not asking you questions. I'm asking y'all to look in the mirror sometimes and not answer your phone when she's speaking, not go out there and talk. You know what I mean, I don't understand, it's so disrespectful when we come here for answers and justice. But when anybody else come here for other answers, you give it to them, but I'm a problem. That is disrespectful to the highest form of disrespect. I mean, I don't understand what else you need to see, two, three more bodies, or one police officer dead? Because I guarantee you, the city will turn around and dissect if a police officer shot. I guarantee you. I mean, I would never give up the fight, because like I said, I'm a changed man. If I was the same person, I would not, I would have given it a long time ago, and probably would be out there looking for a police officer, and I tell you, I tell you too. You know, but you guys have the voice too. We can't keep talking and talking and talking and wishing and praying and singing soulful songs and stuff, and nothing's gonna help. We need your help too. If you really believe us, and you believe this is justice, and I'm not talking about the people out there fighting when they're marching with us, or somebody else might come around and have a say or so, and the papers put it in, and when a, the grave to a mayor, when the grave of movement, K Hill, when the grave of... Why not sit down and talk to us? Why not do something? Why not put veterans in those streets, in on Remson Avenue? Why put rookies? All you tell something rookie is to do is go out there, you're 22 years old, 23 years old, whatever happens, do what you wanna do. That's what's happening out there. There's no change at all. And I have a lot of questions to ask, but I can't ask them, because you're not gonna give me no answers. Every single time we're here, and like the man back there said, it's true. Well, y'all know the truth. We all know y'all might go home, I don't know you personally, but you might go home and have fun and have dinner with your family, and you know, all those guys is at it again. And while you're doing that, they're getting beat up in the speech right now. Why are they narcotic officers following marchers with cameras? Why everybody's in jail and clubs, guess what, the narcotic officers are following us marching. That makes no sense. White, black, tiny, anybody, it doesn't make any sense. And it just keeps going on, you have Rutgers University, you have John for the Jets, you have money in this city, but not one dollar for that. Not one dollar for where we from. Because, trust me, that side of the city and that side is two different worlds. It's two different worlds, there's no respect at all for us. Like the man right here said, he grew up, he came from Brooklyn. Every day they see that out there. And in one second, he's telling you, you're shot out here. That's sad, man, it really is sad, and I hope people start realizing that. When you talk to the mayor once in a while, or you sit down with your kids, and you bounce on their knees, that same kid, whether he's right, he can get the wrong cop that day in New Brunswick. He can be out there with his friends in college, out there drinking and whatever, and come out here and get shot. And guess what? Most likely, because most of you people are here as well, they get no respect. And that's the truth. That's the truth, I hate to say it, but listen, it's not my cover, I said it last time. So we didn't have white kids over there to get the disrespect about police. So I mean, what else can we do? If we turn this around, then it's what, we're all the animals. If we're built marching, we get degraded by the mayor. So we're still bad. What else do you wanna see happen? There's nothing else you can do. Turn your other cheek, I got two cheeks, I don't have 10 of them, I can't keep turning. You see what I'm saying? It really is sad, because it makes me want to cry. I see this every day, and it's sad, because we don't get no answers. Capulo still, like he said, on vacation, the mayor rarely comes out. I mean, what's going on out here? We're not animals. And like I said, I was a bad guy. So I speak for anybody else who's been a bad guy and changed. But if I stayed the same and was bad, then I was always the same guy. It's sad, it really is sad, and I hope that some of these officers around here, and some of these I know, some of them are good guys, some of them are fair, give me a fair cop. I'll take that. Give me a fair cop who's not gonna shoot first. Give me that. Give me a fair cop who's not gonna pull me over, because he has two more arrests to make to make the call this month. He's seen the first call with a black or Spanish guy. Give me a fair cop. I'm 40 now, I'm not 20 no more, I don't wanna fight nobody no more, but I'll fight you with my mind till the day I die. Till the day I die. Please, do something. Do something. Talk to the mayor. Talk to the mayor, have a meeting with him, make it a, I'm a star from the block number, I don't care. You know, I'm serious, it's not a joke for me. It's not a joke, I'm tired, I'm sad, I'm hurt, people dying, shot, it's just sad, and it's like, no answers. It's like, when this comes up around here, it's, oh, here they go, here they go, here... Somebody's dead, somebody's almost paralyzed, why would that be so, oh, oh, why? It's just serious. Police supposed to protect you. Yeah, we know you have people out there that hit the police and start fighting and all that, but in general, in general, they're supposed to protect you. And there's a lot of fair cops out there, they're not police action. They're not police action, there's a lot of good cops out there. I learned that, it took a long time for me to learn that, but I learned it. There's a lot of good cops, and I hate for those good cops to get that, as a matter of fact, I hate for those good cops to be the one that get shot.
What I would say to you, and thank you for talking, what I would say to you is sometimes when people are looking for answers, we cannot give them answers because there's an investigation going on, sometimes you know more than we do, some of the things that happens. The only thing that I could tell you at this point, and I'll be, I'm speaking about myself, just me as a person. I really, you know, like, Mr. Pedding today offered, you know, gave us a good suggestion, I had yet to hear from people to give suggestions of how can we improve, I do complaints and this and that, and this, you know, all of these, but I haven't had, I haven't heard yet an agenda, solutions, you know, let's work together, everything is like, it's being one-sided. So today, like I said, Mr. Pedding offered, I like the baseball cards, that's something that is, you know, really, that's a thing for our kids, so I'm giving out right now for the community to start getting to know our police officer. Three more ideas, that doesn't mean that I'm gonna be able to, you know, we're gonna be able to do it, but at least let's talk about it, let's have a conversation on it, don't make it a personal, you know, attack, let's have a conversation, and offer us, you know, what are your suggestions as a community? I live in this community, and I don't live in that sound of town, I live in the feelings, in the town where everything is going. So I know what's going on, you know? I know things are going, you know, at least in my area, my experience, and I can only talk about me, because I don't have your experience. My area, I live on Red, Redwood Avenue.
Want to talk about some of that?
It's pretty much, you know, it's okay. One of the shootings happened next to my, next to my house, almost. So I know what's going on, and I know that there is implementation, but sometimes you want some answers that we don't have, because we don't even know, and sometimes we cannot talk about an investigation because it's so boring, and we don't have the facts, and it's too responsible for us, at least for me, to afford me that an opinion to talk about it, if I don't have all the facts. But again, I thank you for sharing your point of view. Get those suggestions, write it down, give them to me, you know, and let's, let's see what happens, we'll work this out.
We always have suggestions, every time you come here.
No, you always ask about, give us suggestions about the mayor or the police, let's talk about community level.
Let's talk about community level, let's talk about complaints, as a matter of fact, since you brought that up. You see what Sergeant Roga for that? Let's talk about complaints, you see what happened to us about that? Ten years with complaints, going to the garbage. There does not, yeah, ten years later, and it could have been eighteen bodies later. That's the point, you keep saying the investigation, investigation is September it happened, we're back at Deloche, and it's still being investigated. Now this is gonna be investigated for another year, probably. But you guys have a voice, that's my point. This meeting is for you guys to help somebody. That's the point. You have a voice, we can't do but so much. Because in everybody else's face, in everybody else's eyes, we're negative. I've never seen nobody bow down to police so much, and this guy and our movement for doing positive, I never see somebody hate positive, that is crazy to me. Real quick, I want everybody, I want everybody to look into the demeanor of that lady right there. That right there, that lady right there is our community liaison. I mean, we're supposed to go infiltrate her. All she's done since we've been this meeting was yawn, turn her head, and laugh, and smile. So if they don't respect us, we don't respect them. What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!